That's been an issue and it sounds like they'll have to be pleased to, you know, like pleading to, to get accommodation if it's not agreed upon. That, that remains a concern. I think most of us have been pretty accommodating in our own worlds, but I, the bigger picture. So that's, that left me concerned. The, the term political interference, I don't think was, was appropriate. I think that, I think the influence is, if I want to call it that, a, a political direction came from the province. And that, that concerns me. I think we had something that worked well. I think hybrid is the way to go. It doesn't imply that people are out of time. It's not like the beginning of COVID. That is a totally different situation where we were all away from each other. I think we were all glad when we could walk back into here and see each other in person. There's no doubt about that. But it didn't require five days a week and we were very productive. So I have to support the Leeper motion and I will not be supporting the council, councillor Curry's motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Low.
Thanks, thanks mayor. My first question's a bit of more of a curiosity question. You know, in a bureaucracy of seventeen, seventeen to eighteen thousand employees, there's about eighty-five percent who have to report onsite anyway because their, their jobs require it. So they're maintenance workers, snowplow, bus drivers, et cetera. Within the remaining fifteen percent, you had stated that there was a percentage in that fifteen percent that almost voluntarily come in three, four, five days a week. What was that, what's that percentage within that fifteen?
So approximately eight percent come to work five days a week. So that's around ninety-three percent of staff that are either in office or on the work site every day. The remaining seven percent have hybrid work arrangements and that is anywhere from two to four days a week.
Okay. And the way that I interpreted, so when the initial memo first came out, it was, as, as several other councillors have mentioned, it was incredibly unclear, open to interpretation, ambiguous, whatever words you want to use. And, and you know, that, that did set off a good amount of panic, certainly in, certainly from the residents that I have who are city employees. There was also other people who reached out, but, but certainly the residents that I have who are city employees. And I think the clarification that you provided two days ago, I want to say, was incredibly helpful. So thank you for that, first of all. And, and I think I want to offer some clarification and maybe, maybe a confirmation that this is basically the difference between opting into five days versus opting out of five days. And that we're just sort of setting the baseline of whether or not our employees through, through their managers will opt in or opt out of the five days. Is that the, the, the main difference here?
Councillor, I think that's a really good way to put it. You know, we're, we're just changing the sands in terms of previously it was, it kind of started with two days a week. Now we're going to start the conversation with respect to five. We're not necessarily going to land on five days a week, but you're going to start the conversation there based on all those other things that I've talked about with respect to is important to the role, responsibility, space and personal needs.
Thank you. And then I believe this, this question may have been asked, but in a different way. So I kind of want to seek some clarity. The decision, the decision on accommodating that, the flexible working requests from our employees is that, you know, that's obviously you delegated down to your senior leadership. And then does it go further down from there, like right down to the program manager, I guess?
Flexibility goes right down to the supervisor level in terms of who do you report to and having that discussion in terms of what the needs are.
Okay. So thank you for the clarification. I, I'm in, you know, a weird position where I have a lot of residents who, who have benefited from hybrid work. My community has benefited from hybrid, hybrid work. But you know, the baseline, sorry, the information that that's been shared and the clarification that's been provided sort of indicated baseline of that flexibility still being there. And then it's just now the difference between opting into the five days and opting out. And if that's, I said this word three times now, but if that baseline of flexibility is still there, you know, I'm, I'm generally okay with it. You know, I'm in the weird position as well where if, if the replacement motion fails, I probably also support the other motion because it does offer that flexibility to our employees. So that's, yeah, I had more, but that's it. Thanks.
Thank you councillor Low, councillor Devine.
Thank you, Chair. So yeah, I'm, I'm certainly quite torn on this issue and also on the manner in which we've been asked to vote on this issue, both on the issue of, of productivity in the workplace, but also on the relationship between council and the city manager. I am deeply sympathetic to the concerns raised by our employees through the Leeper Bradley motion. I would never agree that any blanket return to office order is in the best interests of our employees or the city. It would have far reaching implications for those affected. It would have implications for the city's ability to recruit and retain talent. It would speak, it would not speak to the importance of finding new and creative ways to make life more livable and affordable for people. But at the same time, I am concerned about any motion that attempts to bypass delegated authority of our city manager, authority that is enshrined in provincial legislation. We should not treat it lightly when we tamper with those longstanding institutional arrangements. It wasn't even clear to me, even after various attempts to get clarity from staff, that the Leeper Bradley motion was, for lack of a better term, legal, given that it preempts an authority granted to the city manager by the municipal act rather than delegation of council. All of that aside, I do have questions for the city manager. You've mentioned that the primary objective behind your proposed change was to address organizational culture and not necessarily productivity and that you engaged in consultations and discussions to address those issues of organizational culture. And so I'm looking to understand how we got to this place because the rationale that underpins your decision and the process that led to that helps me in determining my position on that policy. And so how long before you announced the policy change did that process of consultation begin?
We've been talking about this from a senior leadership perspective, I want to say for probably about, maybe a little less than a year in terms of, you know, what does a presence look like? What do we need to do to advance the organization, to provide good succession in the organization? And so that, those conversations happened fairly continuously. And as you know, I meet with all of you on a fairly regular basis to check in. I'm out at staff sites on a very regular basis and these conversations have happened, you know, since I've stepped into this position, as well as conversations with our community partners. So, you know, going, I'm going to say far back more than a year in terms of having these discussions. And as I have said, you know, some of the things that I've heard very consistently from everybody that I have spoken with is really having, you know, that opportunity to have more face to face within the workplace, hearing that we need to be responsive to council in terms of service being extremely important in terms of what we do. And we're a service organization and the same goes with our community partners as well. So I hope that helps.
It does, thank you. So you've mentioned several times, you know, that you've been having conversations either with community stakeholders or with senior leadership, and I appreciate that. I guess what I'm looking to understand on a more granular level is what formal processes took place as part of that consultation. For example, were there any surveys that were conducted with employees before finalizing that decision that might, for example, establish a reliable understanding on what staff's current concerns with organizational culture was?
We did do a survey a number of years ago in terms of checking in with staff. So, you know, and, and culture is obviously one of those underwriting issues in terms of improving culture in the organization. So that's one of the bases in terms of the feedback that we've heard. So a survey is part of it. As I said, conversations in terms of getting feedback from employees as well individually and while at work sites.
So as a member of council, I have been notified of and shown processes of any number of staff-led consultations, whether those were consultations that were public or for just inside the corporation. As far as I can tell, I had no notice of the consultation you're describing, consultation that speaks to a large organizational shift within the corporation. If, as a council member, if I had been brought into any number of staff-led consultation processes, why was council not notified in advance of this process, in advance of this investigation, either about a potential significant change to organizational culture or even embarking on the investigation that led to that?
Well, I certainly apologize councillor in terms of lack of involvement. I mean, typically when we're doing a pulse check or a survey of staff, that's sits on the administrative side in terms of the work that we do. We don't typically advise council when we're doing staff surveys, but it's something that we endeavor do to understand where the pulse of the organization is at, to identify, you know, how are we doing and what do we need to work on?
Thank you. Now, you had mentioned that concern over productivity was not the overriding objective in bringing about this change, but I still do think it's important to consider whether this change might affect productivity. Getting productivity out of staff is certainly of paramount importance to, to my residents. And so prior to making the decision, in aside, aside from checking with staff on their positions on organizational culture, what work was done to establish whether productivity is currently at high levels and whether there might be a shift in productivity, either higher or lower, resulting from this new workplace policy?
Councillor, I'm going to be clear. This is not about productivity here at the city of Ottawa. So there was no pre and post work that was done or will be done. We manage the work that we need to do based on the work plans that we have, the service standards that we have, and we basically measure and report on those. So I, I just want to be clear, this is not about productivity. I'm going to set that aside for a minute and I don't mean to confuse issues, but I recognize that there are instances where staff can be more productive in a hybrid environment, you know, whether, you know, it's working from home or working in perhaps a very quiet place on the basis of what they need to do and what they need to deliver. You know, if it's heads down and they're writing a report or, you know, there, there's focus, then that's, that's important in terms of productivity. And those considerations are being taken into place today in terms of the hybrid approach that we have, and they will be taken into consideration as we move forward post implementation in January.
Thank you, my, I guess just to follow up on that, because I can understand from questions from other colleagues where they're trying to seek what fundamentally will change as a result of this. And even in the conversations today, there, it seems like there are a lot of accommodations built in to the new, new return to office mandate. And while I completely respect your position in that productivity is not the paramount issue here, I still, you know, as a steward of, for the taxpayer, I still want to ensure that productivity is upheld. Now, I think you had said just a second ago that there will, there will not be any post-implementation evaluation on the issue of productivity. But I can't imagine that a change such as this will not seek to have some form of evaluation to measure the success or not of such a change. And so are you saying that whether it's evaluating decreases in productivity levels or not being able to meet service standards or loss of employees or quantifiable differences in employee morale, that there will be no evaluation of that?
I'm not saying that, no. What I'm saying is, you know, productivity is not driving this. So we measure everything we do, will continue to do that, to make sure that we are delivering the best value for money for the taxpayers and for council.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Kits.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A lot of interesting points raised today. I think it's well known that I have a real concern about what will happen to the transportation network throughout the city, particularly, but particularly in South Orleans, if there is a broad adaptation of five day a week in office by major employers. And that fear, what I've characterized maybe dramatically as a collapse of the transportation network, has been driving how I feel about this policy and the discussion today. I had hoped that today would bring clarity, but I find myself getting more confused as the meeting goes on. So Wendy, you're going to have to walk me through this a little bit. If, if the Bradley amendment is adopted to encourage managers to maintain hybrid working arrangements wherever possible, and I am an employee of the city that is not part of the eighty-five percent that report on the frontline, what is next for me on January first? Am I in the office or am I to understand things are continuing the way they are?
So it really comes down to that individual conversation. You look at those remaining fifteen percent of employees today, eight percent choose to come to the office five days a week. It's fine. Seven percent have a hybrid opportunity. We're going to continue to have those discussions councillor and with that amendment, it's just showing the flexibility of us as an employer to be able to offer that. And, you know, I think, you know, how councillor Low described it in terms of, you know, we're, we're flipping kind of like from a two day to a five day discussion. We want to start the discussion with five days and just understand what does it mean operationally? What, what does that particular employee need in terms of their own personal needs? So whether it's childcare, other things, making sure that we're respecting that in terms of what that individual and their supervisor lands on.
Okay. So I guess the official instruction to employees following this meeting will be reach out to your manager?
So we have an implementation plan that we're going to be working with. I'm, I'm going to be sending a communication out to staff and then each department is developing their own plans that work for the departmental areas. And ultimately, to your point, there will be a discussion between the supervisor and the employee at the end of the day. So they can conclude conversations in terms of what that workplace arrangement looks like.
Okay. So the, the communication is going to be proactive. We will, you will be sending out information.
And there will be a series of communications on this and toolkits and resources as well.
Because I, I, I do think people are confused. So I, I think clarity, not just in this room, but to the, to the broader workforce is needed. And I don't, I don't blame employees for being confused with all of this back and forth. So yeah, I think that needs to be rectified. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Brockington.
Thank you, Mayor and councillor Kits. I, I think you've articulated something that I agree with as well because I came here ready to debate a mandatory return office mandate, five days a week. And now it's evolved through the conversation that we're having today. What I get out of it is if you're working in a hybrid work model now, you'll continue to be able to work in a hybrid working model now. Because if you're working in a hybrid model now, you're meeting the operational requirements of your unit or your division. Because if you weren't, you'd have to work here more than whatever hybrid model you have arranged with your manager. So why are we here? Why are we discussing this? If we'll be able to maintain the existing hybrid model for approximately two thousand six hundred employees, even fewer than that, the city managers confirmed that will be upheld. Okay, we're done. Like, like that's the answer here. So I have a question procedurally about the vote because I think I heard that if the Curry motion passes, we will not be voting on the Leeper motion. Did I hear that correctly?
Sorry, I missed that.
Sorry, Mayor. I was just either for you or the city clerk. I just seek clarification that if councillor Curry's motion passes, we will not vote on councillor Leeper's motion. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And so I'm looking at the clauses in councillor Curry's motion. And I'd like to know which clause in the motion yields that decision?
Well, it, well, Madam Clerk, do you want to speak to that? I mean, it, to me, that, that it is a replacement motion because it is reinforcing the authority of the city manager to make the decision, which the, which the other motion does not.
Well, let, let me explain my thoughts. The first clause asks council to confirm that we've received the city manager's memo. Check. The second clause says, we're not going to tell other employers in the city how to do their business. Okay? Check. Those don't conflict with councillor Leeper's motion. We've said we've received the memo, we're not telling others how to structure their, their own employment arrangements. The third says, we reiterate our support that the city or the city manager has delegated authority. The Curry motion doesn't say we affirm the mandate to go back to five days a week. We're not endorsing it. We're not approving it. Those words are deliberately left out of the motion. It just says, we got your memo, we're not telling any other employers what to do, and you're the boss of all the employees and we are in writing, reiterating our support for you as the city manager. But how does this conflict?
Because therefore, if we are affirming that the city manager has the authority to do this, then we cannot direct the city manager to do otherwise.
Doesn't say that, doesn't say that.
Well, we, I mean, that could be added in if it's necessary, but, but I think, I think they are, and I think councillor Leeper agrees with this, that they are mutually exclusive because one is affirming the city manager's right to make this decision and, and affirming that we support the city manager's right to make that decision. The other is removing the city manager's right to make that decision. So they are mutually exclusive. That's, that's my ruling.
I appreciate your interpretation. I'm just saying this motion could have been way more clear about what we're supporting and what we're not supporting because I can actually support all three of those clauses. They're warm and fuzzy statements. They're accurate, they're factual, but they don't speak to the motion that councillor Leeper has on the floor. And that's why I raise it. My next question for you, Mr. Huxley, is, you know, I, I can't believe that we would be in a situation over many years where a city manager serving a municipality would never make a decision that a city council disagreed with, that there, over time, there will come a time where a decision that they have delegated authority to make may be incongruent with the wishes of a council. And so when those times come up, and it's a hypothetical question, what's the recourse? How would a city council address those? Obviously we have a, a matter before us now, but I think it's unlikely for us to assume there will never be a day where a city manager makes a decision that city council didn't disagree with. So, so how do you address that? What is, what is the recourse for those types of situations?
Could I just say, maybe you can add to this, but nobody has ruled councillor Leeper's motion out of order. City, the city council has the authority to withdraw delegated authority from the city manager at any time on any issue. Nobody is saying that that authority does not exist for council. I think what was asked before was, has this ever been done before for an HR matter? And, and the opinion that was expressed by a councillor was that that would set a dangerous precedent. But nobody is questioning whether council has the authority to remove delegated authority from the city manager. We have the authority to do that.
Mr. Mayor, I agree with that. And just to be clear, my, my comments were about the context of this city. I didn't survey and I don't believe the clerk and her answer had surveyed other municipalities across Canada or across Ontario. We were just focusing on the context of the city of Ottawa. And ultimately to the, the city, city council oversees the city manager's office, appoints that particular office, has confirmed that in, in a couple of bylaws. And so those accountabilities continue, subject obviously to the, the higher comments I made.
I guess the point of my intervention at this point is procedurally, my colleague has the right to move the motion he does. This is, this is the forum to do it. And while we recognize in this particular case delegated authority was granted, it's also in order for us to have a debate and discussion about whether or not we want that decision reversed or not. So whether it's been done in the past or not is irrelevant. The, the present situation is a decision was made that at least one member of council wants revisited. So obviously it's in order to have that discussion.
Nobody, nobody ever said it wasn't in order.
Half the discussion today, Mayor, is just on that.
No, but people, I think people, members of council are entitled to express their opinions on whether we should remove delegated authority. Nobody is saying we can't. No, I don't, I didn't hear a single member of council today say we cannot remove delegated authority. They're expressing an opinion that we should not in this case.
People have said that we should not be interfering with HR matters and we should not be going down this road.
Should.
That it's exclusively with.
Again, the key word there is should, not can't.
With the city manager. So we've debated this for two hours and we've had the city manager basically change her mandate from a hard mandatory five days a week to now very open when operational requirements are met to the hybrid model, which is what we have now. The first question that was asked is what's the net difference that's going to happen because of this? And today we're hearing there is not going to be any net difference. We've been talking about this for two hours. That's all I have to say.
Councillor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So yes, we haven't talked. It's great to be the person that talks after someone's like, we've talked for two hours. So we're going to talk about for two hours plus maybe another three minutes. I just wanted to understand, please, Madam City Manager, you know, when we spoke about this in our one-on-one, we were discussing exactly those, those pieces that you had brought forward, that, you know, some of these decisions were made because there were folks in the city of Ottawa who had not yet members, yet met members of their team in person. And that was concerning or that there was some accountability that was challenging when you were doing these sort of conversations and surveys within the city service. Is that accurate?
You look at the overriding feedback that I've had, it's really about creating those in-person opportunities across the organization. And, you know, I, I can tell you and I'll reiterate this again today, you know, there are instances that I shared with you sometimes when I'm out and about, where I have heard from somebody who says they haven't met their colleague, you know, in five years or in two years since they've started with the city. And you hear me talking about relationships and I, I, I think relationships are really important in terms of who we know and how we do our work. And when you have that relationship, I think it just makes everything a lot easier.
Thank you for that. So I wonder, you know, with these circumstances, was it ever an option for yourself and your senior leadership team to establish certain new expectations within management about meeting once a week or having quarterly meetings or, you know, other best practices of working in a hybrid environment?
I think that's all part and parcel in terms of what we're trying to achieve here. I'm not saying that those things aren't happening. Some of those things are happening across the organization, maybe not as consistently as they could be. But again, responding to the feedback that I've heard from our partners, from employees, from other members in terms of creating that opportunity to do that, and that's what we're doing.
Thank you for the answer. I mean, I think what's, what's, what I'm finding challenging about the motions that have been put in front of us is that there's a bit of a, a false dichotomous, dichotomy or an equivalency between, you know, whether or not we support the city manager and your expertise and whether or not we believe that a return to office policy could be harmful or that the message delivered in the way that it was, was indeed harmful. And I, I think I, I have to reject the equivalency. I, I, I think there's many circumstances in which I wouldn't, would not want to walk a mile in your shoes, Madam City Manager, and I would very much want you to be the one to make these decisions. I think, I think the challenge is that with the respect of this particular decision at this particular time, the implications for our broader city systems are quite substantial. You know, what's been made clear to me through being stopped on my kid's school ground, through email and even as recently as on the doors last week is that city employees are, you know, have a very strong work ethic and they're deeply committed to public service and they believe they are able to deliver on that regardless of where they put their body. And I think it's unfortunate that the relationship with our city's workforce has been damaged by the way that we delivered this communication. And I think it, it is an opportunity for city council to reiterate the values that are in our official plan and that are frankly in the future of work. and that are frankly in the future of work. Um, you know, looking at hybrid work can be seen as an opportunity. Um, we can stimulate economic activity and productivity in other parts of our city. And with my, you know, particular uh, area, I have actually one of the other locations for the city's um, uh, workforce, and we're actually talking about developing a lot of its surface uh, to put housing instead of parking. And these are really, you know, pragmatic decisions, both economically, and they're really future forward decisions. And so I think the challenge that we've been all put in is that we have these two visions that are not that are not being positioned as uh, anything but mutually exclusive. You know, I was talking only yesterday with the executive director for the Bell's Corners BIA, and she was letting me know how she's got ideas for how to modify the city's economic development grants, so they can be more relevant for suburbs when we don't have main streets. And that's the kind of innovation we should be looking for, is how to interrogate further our city services so that we can actually diversify further our workforce across this big city. I think one of the ways that we respond to the rural urban divide is by, you know, embracing some of these progressive um, uh, technologies and figuring out a way to do it. And if there are problem actors or problem teams, we target them. And and we lean into that, and we give extra mentorship and coaching absolutely, but unfortunately, I think we've done something damaging today. Um, I think increased flexibility and deeper local neighborhood identities and the quintessential live-work-play vision of our city is where we could go, and there's no reason why we can't drill down on those troubled spots. And so, you know, it's not comfortable for me to to vote against a motion that basically says that I believe in in, you know, the city manager's delegated authority. I don't find that equivalent to voting for or against a five-day work week. I I I sort of reject that, but here we are. Um, but given the implications for the lived experience of my residents and the impact that this will make on our transit system, on our childcare system, on our roads, on our climate, on our neighborhood businesses, I I will vote to support uh, the Leaper motion, and I won't support to replace, to to for the replacement motion, because I think things are hard enough out there right now for everybody. And the city's job is to make things just a little bit easier for everybody, and this won't do it. So return to office is a step backwards for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Leaper, did you want to wrap up on your motion? And then councillor Currie, if you want to wrap up on yours?
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I I will keep it relatively brief. We've had a a good discussion this morning, but I wanted to reiterate a couple of the points that I've heard from my colleagues uh, that I really love. Um, councillor Dudas, you wrote an excellent column in your local newspaper. Uh, you reiterated it today with respect to the kind of vibrant local economies that are emerging as a result of work from home. Um, I I believe that those local economies are uh, central to the kind of city that we have said we're going to try to build through the official plan. Uh, councillor Luloff, uh, you know, great to hear from you with respect to the um, uh, the transportation challenges that people have when our our transit and our road networks are as challenged as they are. Uh, going back to a nineteen fifty's vision of travel patterns in cities is the wrong way to go. Um, the, sorry, um, councillor Menard, uh, made some fantastic points with respect to the fact that um, uh, hybrid teams are better teams. Hybrid teams are more connected teams. Uh, and councillor Trosser spoke, um, really eloquently to the um, uh, damage that this will do to this city's ability to attract and retain talent. What I heard from councillor Divine that I'm finding uh, very frustrating today is the statement that many of you believe that, and I'll I'll try to quote as closely as I can, councillor Divine, um, it's not in the best interest of the city and our workforce. The order that has been issued by the city manager is that the city of Ottawa will return to five days in the office as the new standard for all city employees effective January first. And what I've heard from so many of you around the table is that is not in the best interest of the city and its workforce. There is one body to which rep- uh, residents turn to protect our workforce and the city. It's not the city manager. The city manager is our employee. They turn to us. If you believe that a five-day-a-week return to the office is not in the best interest of the city, and it's not in the best interest of our workforce, knowing that you have the ability to direct the city manager differently. And I don't think there is any question. Exercise that ability. Vote appropriately. That's our job. And I hope today that you will have the courage to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Leaper. Councillor Currie?
Uh, so thank you. I just, you know, a lot of, a lot has been said today, and I would agree that this was a great opportunity to get clarity. Um, and I think one of those clarifications comes when you look around this table and see no one here at this table, all the way around the table, has said, we think five days in office is the way to go for all employees. No one said that, because no one believes that. What everyone believes is that the city manager can determine how people are going to work best and what is best for all employees. That's what we actually discussed here today. And if you had to do a bingo card for how many times flexibility was said, it was said many, many, many times, including by the city manager. So what is actually happening here with this motion is that it, we are clarifying that yes, it is possible for some employees to come back and work five days in office, but not all, and that there will be accommodations, flexibility, case-by-case analysis. All managers will be told that that is the case, and it won't start for a while, so there will be a long communications plan and explanation for employees and opportunities for employees to speak to their managers. That's what's actually happening with this. And first and foremost, that and all of that lies within the city manager's role and responsibility in jurisdiction. And just to be clear about what our city solicitor said, we absolutely could could vote, uh, to take that delegated authority away from our city manager, but the question is, and then what? To quote Warren Buffett, if you don't answer that question before you do things, then you could potentially make big mistakes. And then what? If we take away that delegated authority, what does that actually mean? And that's what our city solicitor is asking us to contemplate here before we vote. So I appreciate the conversation, and I think that what's happened, and thanks to councillor Bradley, we have a friendly amendment that adds that flexibility even more specifically into this motion. I think this should be in a unanimous vote for this particular motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Currie. Um, I'll just say a few things and just ask a couple of quick questions just for the sake of clarity. First of all, there's a, there's kind of a a supposition that's been made or even an accusation that this has been done at the at the request of the province of Ontario. Um, so I'll ask you directly, Wendy. Um, did Doug Ford or Doug Ford's chief of staff or any official with the province of Ontario ever request of you that you change anything about our workplace policies?
No, Mayor.
Did I ever come to you and say Doug Ford called me, or his chief of staff called me, or another provincial official called me, and we need to change our workplace policies because of that?
No, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think one thing is clear. Look, we all care about our employees. We all care about the employees of the city of Ottawa. So let's, let's reinforce that narrative. I'm glad to see so many people speaking passionately about the great work that our employees do. I take every opportunity I get to go out to work sites and thank our employees. Let's also remind ourselves that, as the city manager told us today, ninety-three percent of our employees currently work five days a week on site. Eighty-five percent of them did so throughout the pandemic. Another eight percent have been doing so, even though they're eligible for hybrid work. So we're talking about a change that would happen with regard to the standard for seven percent of our employees, which is perhaps a thousand employees, give or take. My understanding, and and Wendy, you can confirm this perhaps, my understanding is that what's happening here is a simple shift. We are not ordering those employees, those seven percent, back to the office five days a week starting January first. We are saying that the standard will change. We're currently it's two days a week to the standard being five days a week, but like before, individual employees will be able to work with their managers to make alternate arrangements, and that flexibility will be applied, and that as we've heard from various communications from you in the last couple of days today, and as a result of the friendly amendment from councillor Bradley, that flexibility will not be unreasonably denied.
That's correct, Mayor.
Thank you. And again, I want to thank councillor Bradley for that helpful amendment, which I think was 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 a good way to clarify that. So we know that there will continue to be lots of clarity and flex, sorry, lots of flexibility. We have clarity about that now. I don't think it is fair to characterize this as ordering our employees back to the office five days a week starting January first. That is not what's happening. City manager has been clear about that. To me, as much as I appreciate the conversation we've had today, and it's been a healthy conversation, a respectful conversation, to me, fundamentally, it comes back to whether we ought to be having that kind of conversation, because we're talking about HR stuff today, and we don't do HR. City manager does HR. We hired the city manager, and we hired her to do a job, and I think we should let her do that job. So for me, there's a fundamental line that we should not cross, which is to get into doing HR at the council table. There were a lot of, you know, I I understand why we had the conversation today. I don't think it's a bad thing that we did, but it's not a conversation we should typically have, because it's an HR conversation. So for that reason, because we've received assurances that there will be flexibility, uh, I will be supporting councillor Currie's uh, uh, replacement motion. And again, I appreciate the friendly amendment from councillor Bradley. So with that, uh, could we please vote on the replacement motion?
Councillor Lowe?
Yes.
Conseil de Ruche?
Wait.
Councillor Carr?
Yes.
Conseiller Plante?
Oui.
Councillor Kits?
No.
Councillor Hubley?
Yes.
Councillor Leaper?
No.
Councillor Trosser?
No.
Councillor Brown?
Yes.
Councillor Tierney?
Yes.
Councillor Johnson?
No.
Councillor Hill?
Yes.
Councillor Gower?
Yes.
Councillor Currie?
Yes.
Councillor Luloff?
Yes.
Councillor Bradley?
No.
Councillor Kavanaugh?
No.
Councillor Kelly?
Yes.
Councillor Divine?
No.
Councillor Brockington?
No, but I support clause one, two, and four.
Councillor Dudas?
Yes.
Councillor King?
No.
Councillor Menard?
No.
Councillor Skolski?
Yes.
Mayor Setcliffe?
Yes.
Fifteen yeas, ten nays.
Can I just ask a question, because that hasn't happened before during my time here, but can can you vote against a motion? I I know you can vote for a motion but dissent on one part of it. Can you vote against a motion but assent on three parts of it?
Mr. Mayor, and the member may wish to clarify that this has the effect of dissenting on recommendation three of the motion. Is that correct, councillor?
I would like my vote on the motion to be recorded as opposed, but there are clauses within the motion that I support that I would like on the record.
Is that even an option?
Mr. Mayor, I have never seen that before. The opportunity to call for a divided vote would have been prior to it being voted on.
So his, so I think his only option is to vote no, basically. Or, yeah, I think the, I think the two options are voting no or voting yes, but dissenting on item three.
I'll just say, Mr. Mayor, that I believe item three is the one that you ruled was the reason why the two motions were mutually exclusive, and that is the the clause that I had the most concern with.
Okay, so do you want to vote no, period? Or do you want to vote yes, but dissent on item three?
If those are my only two options, then I will vote no.
Thank you. So again, fifteen yeas, ten nays. Okay, thank you. All right, motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure. Councillor Leaper? Uh, just, uh, just for clarity, this is a time-sensitive issue. Is that correct? Councillor Leaper? Yeah, so on, because it's a time-sensitive matter on suspension of the rules, is that carried?
It's one of those waiver of demolition controls. Um, so whereas the building at ninety-five Melrose sustained significant damage due to a fire and partial demolition, and whereas, given the poor condition of the building and the risk to public safety, it would be in the public interest to demolish the building, and whereas there is currently no building permit application for a replacement building, and whereas by waiving demolition control application, the city will not receive five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty cents, which includes the eleven hundred and ninety-five dollar and fifty-four cent legal fee plus HST, which is the fee associated with demolition control application. Therefore, be it resolved, that council approve demolition control for the existing buildings on the property subject to the following conditions. One, that the fees related to the demolition control application are waived, totaling five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty cents. Uh, that until the time of the construction of a replacement building, the registered owner shall landscape the property to the satisfaction of the general manager of planning, development, and building services. The registered owner shall prohibit the use of the property for other interim uses and maintain the property in accordance with the property standards by law. The interim condition of the property after demolition of the existing building and up to construction of the replacement building shall include soft landscaping of the vacant lot, which may include grass and low shrubs. If the building for, uh, permit for the replacement building is not issued within twenty-four months from the date of issuance of the demolition permit, the city clerk shall enter onto the collector's roll the sum of one thousand dollars up to a maximum of twenty thousand dollars total for the residential dwelling, which was demolished for each month thereafter, that a residential dwelling is not constructed, except insofar as any delay is attributable to the city not meeting policy or statutory review and approval deadlines. The registered owner shall enter into an agreement with the city, I'm trying to find a way to slow the, uh, cut this down. At such time as a building this, uh, permit is issued to redevelop the site and the replacement building is in place, the agreement will become null and void and will be released upon request of the owner. The owner shall pay all costs associated with the release of the agreement. The registered owner agrees that the demolition permit will not be issued and the building cannot be demolished until such time that the agreement referenced herein has been executed and registered on title. This approval is considered null and void if the agreement is not executed within six months of council's approval. Therefore, be it further resolved, that council delegate authority to the director of planning services and planning, development, and building services to make minor revisions to the agreement as needed. Uh, Mr. Mayor, my commitment is that if this passes and we do delegate that authority to the director of planning services with respect to minor agreements, I will not bring motions to override them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Leaper. Councillor Currie, you have a replacement motion? Just kidding, just kidding. Okay, is that carried? Notices of motion for consideration at subsequent meeting. Councillor Gower?
Thanks, Mayor. Whereas the city of Ottawa, the government of Ontario and the government of Canada have invested eight point one five billion in Ottawa's stage one and two LRT project based on a cost-sharing model that has seen Ottawa taxpayers contribute fifty-five percent of the overall cost of the project. And whereas in other large Ontario cities like Toronto, Brampton, Hamilton, and Waterloo, the province and metro lengths have built, owned, and maintained light rail transit systems at little to no cost to local taxpayers. And whereas Mayor Setcliffe has been advocating with the provincial government for the fair treatment of the city of Ottawa and its taxpayers for almost a year, especially as it relates to the ownership and maintenance of LRT assets. And whereas Premier Ford and Transportation Minister Sarkaria were in Ottawa on February fourth to announce a campaign commitment to upload Ottawa's LRT, which Premier Ford reiterated in his speech on election day. And whereas in the provincial budget tabled on May fifteenth, Minister Bethlen Falvey reiterated the province's commitment to pursuing the upload of Ottawa's LRT. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the city manager enter into negotiations with the province of Ontario regarding the upload of LRT, and that the following principles be foundational to those discussions and inform a future agreement with the province. A, that a deal must be fair to Ottawa taxpayers and consistent with precedent deals reached in other Ontario municipalities. B, that the governance structure of Metro Links includes appropriate mechanisms to ensure accountability and transparency for Ottawa residents. C, that Metro Links has a significant presence and adequate resources in Ottawa to meet its commitments to the city of Ottawa and OC Transpo. D, that OC Transpo maintain local control over service delivery and hiring of personnel. E, that any savings from reduced debt servicing and maintenance costs be reinvested into OC Transpo. F, that the value of transit-oriented development opportunities available along the LRT corridors be identified, assessed, and factored into valuations. And G, that the province consult and collaborate with the city of Ottawa and OC Transpo on the planning, design, procurement, construction, delivery, and operation of on the planning, design, procurement, construction, delivery, and operation of Stage 3 LRT to Kanada, Spitzville, and Barhaven. And be it further resolved that the mayor and the city manager report back to the Finance and Corporate Services Committee on the status of their discussions as key milestones are achieved. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Gower. Counselor Dudas?
Whereas Gregory, Mayor Greg Kesmierski, was proof positive that having an intellectual disability does not need to hold you back. Overcoming every challenge life threw at him with courage, humor, and heart. Whereas born with Down Syndrome and two holes in his heart, Greg defied expectations from the very beginning, fighting for his place in school, in society, in the hearts of his community. Whereas Greg was a fighter in every sense, earning a black belt in Taekwondo and training at local martial arts gyms, while also overcoming challenges with strength, kindness, and determination. Whereas Greg was a beloved and iconic figure in Blackburn-Hamlet, affectionately known as the honorary mayor of Blackburn-Hamlet, regan- recognized for his leadership in fostering community spirit and connection. Whereas Greg worked for 35 years at the local grocery store, where his welcoming presence and genuine care for others made him a daily source of joy and comfort for generations of families. Whereas Greg was a tireless community builder known for his enthusiastic support of local events such as the Blackburn Fun Fair, holiday celebrations, and neighborhood gatherings, where he was often seen giving out his signature bear hugs and uplifting everyone around him. Whereas Greg had a deep love for sports and was a fixture at local hockey games at the Blackburn Arena and baseball games at the Blackburn Park Diamond, where he cheered on players with unmatched spirit and kindness. Whereas Greg was also a regular at the Blackburn Arms Pub, where he played darts, sang Elvis tunes, and cheered loudly for his beloved Ottawa senators, further cementing his role as a joyful and familiar presence in the community. And whereas Greg's extraordinary contributions to the community life were recognized through prestigious honors, including the Canada 125 Medal in 1993, the Ontario Medal for Good Citizenship in 2008, and his designation as honorary mayor of Blackburn-Hamlet in 2008. Therefore, be resolved that the baseball diamond located in Blackburn Park be officially named the Greg, Greg Kryzminski Diamond in honor of his life, legacy, and enduring impact on the Blackburn Humic- Ha- Hamlet community. Be it further resolved that any costs associated with the installation of signage or plaque and recognition be covered through eligible sources.
Thank you, Counselor Dudas. Motion to introduce bylaws. Counselor Devine?
Thank you, Chair. That the bylaws listed on the agenda under motion to introduce bylaws, three readings be read and passed.
Is that carried? Confirmation bylaw, Counselor Devine?
That the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting of September 24th, 2025.
Is that carried? Are there any inquiries? Motion to adjourn, Counselor Devine?
That the proceedings of the city council meeting of 24 September, 2025 be adjourned.
Is that carried? Thank you.